I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately, and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside of the hearing room in an effort to resolve any outstanding issues. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and not take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file a decision request card, which are available at the end of this horseshoe, so that we have correct information for our records. If you have written submission that you read from, please hand it in to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are done, who is seated on my right. First, the applicant or agent will make a presentation to the committee of the application as submitted; then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views; however, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a decision. Please remember to confine your comments to the matters outlined in the application. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt with by a new tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or T-Lab. For more information on the T-Lab, please visit the website or the CFA website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decisions and to be informed of appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as the T-Lab will be sending notification and appeal updates by email. Please leave your completed form with the Deputy Secretary Treasurer or member of our staff before you leaving today, who was once again seated on my right. Okay, so now we move forward with the confirmation of last meeting minutes. Panel members?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move for approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay. So our motion to adopt the last meeting minutes has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the minutes have been adopted. Panel members or staff, is there any declaration of interest?
No.
Closing files. Madam Deputy Secretary, are there any files to be closed?
Not that I'm aware of, but there may be somebody in the room who wants to withdraw.
Okay, so are there any applicants who wish to withdraw their application? Okay. Deferal request, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferrals?
No, Madam Chair.
So before we proceed, please note that the committee will not be entertaining extensive -- oh, sorry, deferal requests? Okay, so if you can please come forward. Are there any parties first let's hear which I know of? You can please come up forward. If you can just introduce yourself and the application number.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Russell Cheeseman. I'm a solicitor, and I'm here on item number 3, 9 St. Nicholas Avenue, 9 St. Nicholas Street.
Okay, just one second. Are there any parties for item number 3, 9 St. Nicholas Street? Okay, if you can please come forward and be seated on my left-hand side. Are there any other parties in interest for item number 3? Okay. Just one second, sir. Okay, so if there are no other parties, we'll just proceed. Are there more parties? No?
No, no, he's just telling her where he's sitting.
Okay. Sorry, are there any discussions to be made? If something, we'll just vet the agenda. Excuse me. If you would like to discuss this, you can step outside. I'll just vet the agenda, or are you ready to proceed?
I think we're ready to proceed, ma'am.
Okay, so item number 3, 9 St. Nicholas Street. Okay, so right now we'll be speaking directly to the deferral?
Yes. In terms of the deferral, ma'am, there is some opposition that's been voiced by the neighbors in this matter. This is with respect to addition of a couple of windows at the fourth and sixth floors of the building. There are existing windows at five. It's an application that would be made under section 45-2 of the Planning Act, due to the fact that those are there on the fifth floor. And concerns have been raised by the neighbors. We'd like to take the opportunity to speak to them, to see if there's a way to accommodate their concerns. We have had preliminary talks, but we haven't gone far enough to get through it. So we'd like the opportunity to put it off for a cycle, or however long it would take.
Okay, so up to 2019?
We don't have a hearing schedule up to 2019.
So the other options, we can hold this item?
Yes, let's do that.
And then you can have any discussions that you need to today?
Thank you.
And then we'll just bring it up. And if you still need a deferral, we can just defer them.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we'll hold item number 3 down. Okay, so now we'll proceed with vetting the agenda. For item number 1, 171 Langley Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? Item number 2, 132 Barker Avenue, agent or applicant? Item number 2, 132 Barker Avenue? Okay, they're not here yet, so we'll just hold this item down. Item number 3 has been held. Item number 4, 29 Cavell Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 5, 18 Southwood Drive, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Item number 6, 56 Hewitt Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 7, 185 Oak Park Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Okay, so this item will be held. So once again?
Oh, the owners?
Oh, the owners? Okay.
We are together.
Okay, so the item will not be held then. Perfect. Okay, so item number 7 will not be held. Item number 8, 163 Indian Grove, agent or applicant? 163 Indian Grove? No, no agent or applicant. Any interested parties for this item? Item number 9, 126 Delaware Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 10, 25 Roxeter Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 11, 665 Sudan Avenue, agent or applicant?
Behind the pillar.
Oh, behind the pillar? Okay. Are there any interested parties for 665 Sudan Avenue? Item number 12, 376 Indian Grove, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 13, 2068 Gerard Street East, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Item number 14, 131 Chiltern Hill Road, agent or applicant? 131 Chiltern Hill Road? Okay, no agent. Item number 15, 26 Alburn Road, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Item number 16, 120 Sunnyside Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 17, 238 Holborn Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 18, 91 Hillcrest Drive, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 19, 64 Wembley Road, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 20, 56 Tiago Avenue, agent or applicant? 56 Tiago Avenue? No, not yet. Item number 21, 5 Brookside Drive, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 22, 206 Joffrey Street, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number 23, 171 Gleb Mount Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Okay, so that item will be held. So once again, we strongly advise you to step outside. So if we can have the agent put up their hand.
I'm just a neighbor of the 171.
Are you in support, or?
No.
No? Okay, so you're in opposition, or in interest?
I also sent an email with my concerns as well, so I wasn't sure how it would.
Okay, so we have the agent in the back then, so if you would like to speak to him if you need more information or any issues that need to be addressed. Item number 29, 94 Galley Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Okay, so that item will also be held. So once again, we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. So item number 2, do we have the agent here for 132 Barker Avenue? No, not yet. Item number 3 is being held. Item number 8 is being held, 163 Indian Grove. Item number 14, 131 Chiltern Hill Road, do we have the agent? No? Okay.
163 Indian Grove, the agent's not here.
Sorry, which one?
Number 8.
Oh, I think that's the one. Oh, yes, sorry, 163 Indian Grove, is the agent here?
Yes.
Okay, so the agent's here. Do we have any interested parties for 163? No? Okay. Do we have the agent for 132 Barker Avenue? No? Okay, so item? Item 14, 131 Chiltern Hill Road, do we have the agent here?
Yeah.
Okay, so the agent showed up. Do we have any interested parties for 131 Chiltern Hill Road? No? Okay, so that item will not be held. Item number 20, 56 Tiago Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? 56 Tiago Avenue? No? And then 23 is being held, and 24 is being held. Okay, so we'll proceed with item number 1, 171 Langley Avenue. If we can have the agent or applicant, please come up. So before you start, the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and if you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning. Edward Lee, agent for the owner.
Okay, panel members, if you would not like a presentation, we'll proceed with questions?
I don't need a presentation.
Okay, so we'll just proceed with questions.
Okay.
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions. Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, there are no questions, so we'll just be in committee discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if there are no comments from my colleagues, I would move approval of the application, as I feel it meets the four tests, fits within the context of the neighborhood, and yeah, so that's my motion.
Okay. Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item 2, is the agent here for 132 Barker Avenue? 132 Barker Avenue? No? Okay, so we'll hold this item down then. Item 3 is being held. Item 4, 29 Cavell Avenue, if we can have the agent or applicant, please come up. Item number 4. So the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a CFA decision affecting the subject property. We have photos of neighborhood form from the agent. We have a staff report from community planning, and we have six form letters in support from various addresses on Cavell Street, including the directly adjacent neighbors, I believe?
Yes.
One directly adjacent neighbor. And then we have correspondence and opposition from 27 Cavell Avenue. So sorry, that's the directly adjacent neighbor. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Marco Viera. I'm the agent and designer for this project, and the application before you is to rebuild the existing front porch and enclose it.
Okay, panel members, if there's no request for presentations, we'll proceed with questions.
Are you aware of the conditions in the planning report?
Yes, we are.
You're fine with those?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions?
I have no other questions.
Okay, no more questions than discussion or a motion?
I think one of my questions had been with respect to the, you know, others enclosed porches in the area, and having looked at the area, and also with the submissions that we've received with photographs of similar enclosed porches, both on detached and semi-detached, I think it's appropriate. So if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I'd be prepared, through you, Madam Chair, to move a motion to approve the application, as I believe the variances being requested are indeed minor and are appropriate.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes, second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the application has been approved, including the planning conditions?
Yes, including the planning conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 5, 18 Southwood Drive. So the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and we can have the agent or the applicant please introduce themselves.
I'm Munna Kadri, applicant.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions unless there is a request for a presentation. Panel members, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I have no questions.
Okay, if there are no questions, then discussion or a motion?
This seems appropriate to the site. The, it's a simple top-up. I would approve of the application, as I believe it meets the four tests, and is in accordance with the community.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. The application's been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 6, 56 Hewitt Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have correspondence and support from 61 Hewitt Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name's Osren Stambuk. I'm the agent of the applicant.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions unless there is a request for a presentation. Panel members?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, no questions, discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if there are no other questions. This application is indeed minor. There are a lot of rear garages that are already existing, so it fits within the context of the neighborhood, therefore I would move approval.
I was actually... No, it's fine. I had a thought in back of my head about it, but...
Okay. Okay. So I would move approval of the application, as I feel it needs the four tests.
Okay.
I will second that.
So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you.
You have a great day.
You too. Item number 7, 185, sorry, Oak Park Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from community planning, as well as we have correspondence and concern/interests from 176 Oak Park Avenue. So if you can please introduce yourself.
I'm Andy Trotter. I'm the agent designer.
Okay, we'll proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation.
The only question I have is, are you aware of the condition in the planning report?
Yes, yes, and I think it was appropriate, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, no other questions than discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I believe that what's being proposed with the condition in the staff report, and planning staff report included, represents some inappropriate development on the site, and I would move for approval.
Okay, including the planning conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes, including the planning conditions, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Item number 8, 163 Indian Grove. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have a staff report from Transportation Services. If you can please introduce yourself.
Ian Kunea, representing the owners of 163 Indian Grove.
Okay, panel members, we'll just proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation.
Just, you've read the transportation report?
Yes, I have.
The only thing to note is for, so the portion of the driveway needs to be restored. Should we put a condition in terms of satisfaction of the right-of-way management?
I think so.
If there is a motion?
That would be two.
Pardon?
That would be...
Okay. Okay, so if there are no other?
Yeah, he is.
Yeah. So we'll just, if we do approve it, we'll put it to the satisfaction of Management of Transportation Services?
Yes.
Of Right-of-Way Management, sorry. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if no more questions, discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I feel that what's being proposed fits within the context of the neighborhood, meets the four tests, so I would move approval of the application, including the condition that the obsolete portion of the driveway on City Boulevard must be restored to soft landscaping, and the existing curb cut realigned to the proposed single-car garage to the satisfaction of Transportation Services.
I will second that with the observation that the parking variance, that there is a parking variance, but that overall I think this represents a development that's more in accordance with city intentions at this point. We're not looking for flanking entrance garages.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the outlined transportation condition, second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the application has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be it.
Thank you. Number 9, 126 Delaware Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have correspondence and opposition from 47 Hepburn Street. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Louis Cristello, and I'm the applicant and the agent.
Sorry, are you in opposition, or?
Yes.
You're in opposition? Okay, so you know what? So I didn't realize there is someone in opposition, so this item will be held until all non-contested applications have been dealt with. Okay, so this will give you an opportunity to go outside and discuss any outstanding issues. Item number 10, 25 Roxeter Avenue? Okay, okay, so we'll just come back to after we finish this item. So item number, sorry, 10, 25 Roxeter Avenue, the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and if you can please introduce yourself?
Sandra Kennedy, applicant.
Okay, panel members, there's one variance. We'll proceed with questions.
I have no questions. I'll just say this is truly minor.
Okay. No questions, then discussion or a motion?
If there's no comments from my colleagues through you, Madam Chair, the variance being requested, as my colleague said, is indeed minor, representing floor space index, and I think it is indeed certainly appropriate in the circumstances, so I would move for approval.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11, sorry, so we'll go back to item number 2, 132 Barker Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, and then we have correspondence in interest/concern from 132A Barker Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
My name is Fernando Lima, Lima Architects. I'm the agent for the owner.
Okay. Panel members, we'll just proceed directly with questions, unless there's a request for a presentation. Any questions?
I mean, question or presentation, but could you explain how you think this is minor or desirable?
Yeah, so basically, they only did some interlocking paving, and then the inspector came by and said that he would apply for a minor fair to make it legal, and he's prepared to address any concerns in terms of drainage and so on, but...
So prepared by removing some of the interlocking, or?
I mean, to slope away, or whatever measure that came up, comes up here, has been...
Do you have any other examples where the rear yard landscaping is as minimal as you're proposing here?
No, I don't.
Do you know what the, where you were with your, as a percentage of rear yard landscaping before the interlock?
Yes.
Patio was put in? What percentage was there?
Yes, I will do right now.
No, but you know what? Before the interlock patio went down?
Yes.
Do you know what percentage of rear yard landscaping existed? Was it soft surface?
Yeah, because it was a construction, so there was nothing, everything was turned down.
So was this a new build prior to this?
It was an addition, so everything came out. So we got the permit for the addition.
Is there any reason that that patio has to be as large as it is?
Well, basically, the, I'll have to join with you, the deck is existing, so the shed is existing, and basically, the idea is just so you can connect the deck to the shed.
So, but you mentioned that you installed a rear addition, so was the deck not removed and rebuilt?
Yeah, so the deck was part of the original permit, so it was built especially for the original permit, and the shed was never touched. So basically, they wanted to just connect the two, so to make it, so they can connect the shed to the deck.
So with the building application, you identified the building of the deck, but you didn't identify the interlocking?
Correct, because I didn't know it was supposed to be on the application, because it was not a building per se, it was just like a, like interlocking stone, the lack of fact.
Is there any way to introduce, like, I know there's eco-pavers similar for driveways in terms of the interlocking patio, to have a little bit more?
Yes, I'm familiar with that. The thing is, the, as I said, the work was already done. The inspector came by saying that he would just make it legal. So, no, no, they didn't identify any issues with the drainage. So it hasn't been there for a while, there's no issues whatsoever.
Okay, any other questions, if not, then discussion? Okay, so discussion?
I'm somewhat conflicted, because looking at other yards, they all have some grass, and this doesn't appear to have any.
Yeah, to be honest.
It's got some soft landscaping behind the shed, but I'm not, no, I'm concerned that there's...
Yeah, so we just have some soft...
Sorry, so we're in committee, so, yeah.
I'm concerned about the need to have the patio as extensive as it is, along with the driveway, it's a lot of hardscaping.
I'm honestly not conflicted about this. This is essentially a complete paving through rear yard.
Yeah.
Can't support it.
I think with the flooding risk continuously increasing, the climate change and volume of water, that's, and frequency of rainstorms, I think this is a serious concern.
If you're ready for a motion, I would move refusal of the application, as it is neither within the purpose of the bylaw or minor nature.
Okay, so a motion to refuse has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application's been refused. Thank you. Item number 3 is being held, so we're going back to item number 11, 665 Sudan Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a CFA decision affecting subject property, and we have correspondence in support from 669 Sudan Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm James Zink. I'm the agent for the applicant.
Okay, well, we'll just proceed with questions unless there's a request for a presentation. Okay, panel members?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, no questions, discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if there is no discussion, there are a lot of homes that have a similar look to them, with decks in the back, so I think what's being proposed fits within the context of that street and meets the four tests, so I'd move approval.
Okay, a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 376 Indian Grove. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have correspondence in support from... We have correspondence in support from 374 Indian Grove. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Good morning, I'm Catherine Harrison, agent for the application.
Yes, so once again, we'll just proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions?
What do you, what are you doing for parking now?
Currently, the space between the two houses, there's a shared drive between the adjacent semi, and it's actually less than 2.1 meters wide. So currently, no one can drive up the driveway, and they both park on the street.
What is the existing FSI?
The existing FSI is approximately 0.53.
And do you have examples of houses on the street, particularly semis, that have an FSI of 0.8?
There is, I did not bring it today, but there is three doors up. There is a semi that did go much longer than actually what we're proposing, and they actually maxed out the depth, or at the time it was depth and length. It was over 17 meters.
Okay, panel members, questions?
Sorry, our, the existing FSI is .57. My apologies.
No more questions? No more questions, discussion or motion?
I would observe it is a narrow house, and the parking is an existing condition, seems to be reasonably common to the area. Given that there are no variances for the physical dimensions of the structure, I'm comfortable with this.
Okay. Okay.
If you want to make that a motion, I would approve of the application as I believe it to be minor in nature and appropriate to context.
So a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 13, 2068 Gerard Street East. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. If you can please introduce yourself?
Hi, Asmaan Azaini.
Okay, panel members? Questions?
No questions.
So no questions, so we'll just proceed with discussion or motion?
I think this is indeed minor, and I would also note that this application requires no variances to the bylaw 569. So if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I'd be prepared to move a motion to approve the application as I believe it meets the tests under the planning act.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. Item number 14, 131 Chiltern Hill Road. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, and site statistics. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property. We have a transportation report from Leah Consulting Group. We have a staff report from Right Away Management. And then we have four form letters in support by various owners, including 129 and 133 Chiltern Hill Road. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
My name is Robert Green, CGL Architects. I'm the agent for the owner.
Okay, panel members, we'll proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think this is very minor. I'm not sure if there are any questions. I have no questions.
Okay, no questions?
The variance is not for the parking space, so I will second that.
Okay, so I, yeah, transportation is okay with this. This type of parking pad condition is quite prevalent on the streets. So I think the variances are indeed minor and meet the four tests, so I'd move approval.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Owen, Omen, sorry. Do we have a seconder? Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 26 Alburn Road. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, and floor plans. We have correspondence in support from 21 Alburn Road. And then we have eight form letters in support from various addresses in Alburn, on Alburn Road, including the directly adjacent neighbor at 28. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Good morning, my name is Tay Ruck, planner for the owners of the property at 26 Alburn Road.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or directly to questions?
No presentation.
Okay, we'll go directly to questions. Okay, any questions?
No questions. No questions.
No.
Okay, if there are no questions, then discussion or motion?
I think this is a reasonable intensification. There's not a depth or length variance or a height variance. The house will be in line with at least one of the neighbors and has the support of the other. And if there's no comments, further comments from my colleagues, I'd be prepared to move a motion to approve the application as I believe it is minor and appropriate.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? The application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 16, 120 Sunnyside Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys.
Excuse me, one sec. I'm here for 25 Roxeter. We just got completely stuck in traffic. I just want to let you know I'm here.
So what item is that?
It was number 10.
Okay, so we'll bring you up after.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, we, I think we, sorry, did you say item number, sorry? If you can just come up again, the gentleman just, did you say 1025 Roxeter?
10, number 25 Roxeter.
25, sorry, we already approved the application.
Okay, thank you very much.
No?
Yes.
I have a note there.
Just to confirm, we already approved this application?
Yeah, okay. All right, then I have something out of order here.
Number nine is being held.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, so we are on item number 16, 120 Sunnyside Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property. And then we have three form letters in support from 101 Glendale and 124 and 126 Sunnyside Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Correct, yes. My name is Gabriel Guiducci. I'm the agent for the owners.
Okay, panel members, we'll go directly to questions since it's a garage unless you want presentation.
So is this built and there was an issue with respect to, is it already built?
No.
Okay.
There is an existing garage.
Okay, but you have a previous approval from the committee?
No.
No, not approval.
Oh, refusal.
Yes.
So you removed the height variance?
Yeah, we made some changes to the structure. The most concern was the transportation comments on the distance from the center line of the mainway. And by reducing the size, we managed to get rid of a few variances.
Okay.
Ended up with two on this new file.
Great. Panel members, sorry, just one more question. For the soft landscaping, is that an existing condition?
No, it's not, but we're not far from it. That condition has never changed since the first application. Our goal was to match transportation comments.
Okay.
So we reduced the size that way. It's a corner lot. There is quite a bit of greens that our client, my client, is maintaining on that matter.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, no more questions, discussion or motion?
If a discussion, the soft landscaping is significant, but I think it's what you're going to have to do to get a two-car garage onto this property. Would be comfortable with that.
Okay. I also feel, I think it's a significant improvement from the previous application, and there is quite a bit of City Boulevard on the side of the property. Okay?
I can make that a motion. I would move approval of the application as I believe it to be minor in nature and a desirable development for the site.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 238 Holborn Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. If you can please introduce yourself?
Morning, my name is John Sibinik. I'm representing the owner, I'm the agent as well.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or go directly into questions? Okay, so perhaps you can explain to us why the ground floor deck was constructed without a building permit?
It was done illegally by the previous owners. The current owners purchased the property, they inherited the problems. And we approached the building department and zoning department to seek relief on these issues. Most of these encroachments are encroachments into the City Boulevard, which we realize that requires transportation services approval. We're aware of that. It's a pie-shaped lot. It's very irregular, and the rear yard is very small compared to the front yard. So the fact that there's considerable green space along the side of Glade Hill Road, I think, you know, I think the soft landscape requirement, we're close to, we're about 23%, but if there's an issue with that, we can rectify that too, so.
Okay, any questions? How large is the deck?
It's, let's see here. The deck is 14 square meters. That's total floor area of the two combined decks. One being in the side yard and the other one in the rear yard. It's a very irregular shaped lot, like it's, I don't know what, you know, this house got a permit for the house, but in terms of, you know, you know, you want to have a deck because first of all, the building, the floor elevation is about .8 of a meter above finished grade. Slightly higher for that smaller deck on the side. But by the time you factor in that rear deck plus the shed, there's very little space for soft landscaping. But as I said, we would entertain permeable pavers if that helps that situation.
On the interlocking in the back?
On the interlock in the back, yeah. So there's like almost eight square meters there that we could perhaps help, and that would bring the soft landscaping up to around 41%. So that is a big improvement.
So what's the surface between the shed and the board fence on the Glade Hill?
That's soft landscaping.
That's like grass?
Yeah, that's the grass, that's right.
So there is quite a bit of grass there?
There is, yeah. It's about nine square meters of, you know, soft landscaping in the rear yard.
Thank you. There are no more questions, we're in committee, discussion?
As the applicant mentioned, this is indeed a bit of an odd shaped lot. They're losing a lot of backyard because of the way Glade Hill kind of angles on the side. And if we were to attach a condition to replace the interlock with permeable pavers, I would be comfortable to move approval of the application.
I would second that condition. I was thinking about a condition to remove the interlock, but this is a, this is a situation where you do that, there's no connection to a shed.
Yeah. Plus, they have a gate there as well that, so if there are no other comments, Madam Chair, then I would move approval of the application as I feel that it meets the four tests, fits within the context of the neighborhood, but including a condition to replace the eight square meters of interlock in the rear with permeable pavers.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the permeable pavers condition. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, committee.
So the agent for number, sorry, okay, so that was solved. Number 10 was already dealt with. Okay, so proceeding, item number 18, 91 Hillcrest Drive. We have a plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have correspondence regarding a revised proposal from David Riley. And then we have correspondence in opposition from 93 Hillcrest Drive. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm David Riley from CGL Planning, and I have the detail with respect to what the revision is that I'd like to hand out to the committee.
Okay. So how many drawings are you planning to submit? Is there, it's just?
Because it's, so it's a change to the roof pitch, so it actually shows up on all the elevation drawings. But I have a full package, if that's helpful. You only want what's changed? Sure. So that would be the third floor plan and all the elevations, and all of the elevations.
Uh, sorry? Was this emailed to the case manager?
So it was. However, the case manager let us know that they can submit my letter, but not the plans, and I had to table the plans today.
Okay.
So that's why we thought it would be beneficial at least to have a letter up.
We received the cover letter?
Yes.
This morning, so maybe if you can quickly just go through?
No problem.
The main change?
We'll put up the image of the rear elevation if this helps. So there's actually, the change, the original proposal proposed, so as you know, it's a three-story rear addition. However, the third-story portion of the rear addition was changing the roof pitch of the existing roof. So rather than a peaked roof, it was proposed as a mansored roof addition. On site last week, we spoke to the neighbor to the south at 89, and he brought his concerns to that. This is not the neighbor that submitted the correspondence and suggested, why don't you revise the roof pitch to be in line with the existing roof pitch of the house and provide that continuation? So in speaking with the owner, the designer on the project made the revisions. And in my opinion, this is a really good revision because it actually reduces a large mass that was originally proposed. This has the effect of reducing the variance from .67 to .66. Not a huge reduction, but the reduction, .66 would be the revision.
What is that in meters squared?
And in square meters, that is 315.04 square meters.
Point zero, so 315.04 meters squared. So are you willing to amend then?
We're willing to amend, and we're comfortable with, because it's such a small change to the variance, we're comfortable that the committee add the condition that it be built substantially in accordance with the plans because the variance doesn't translate into that peaked height. And so as assurance to the neighbors, both neighbors, and I did want to speak a little bit to the neighbor to the north who submitted and spoke about monster homes. Certainly, this is not a construction of a new monster home. They did bring up some concerns with respect to light. And I wanted to bring up the point that the depth of this dwelling is actually not, it's just slightly deeper than the existing dwelling to the north, if you look at the site plan. But I think the, what will help in terms of light is this change in roof pitch in terms of moving away that mass from that property line. And the dwellings are approximately five meters apart because the driveways go through the houses. So I do think that that, all of this works together in order to reduce the overall massing of the dwelling.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? No questions? Okay, so in discussion? Discussion or motion?
I think the revisions are significant improvement.
I agree.
Yeah.
Sorry, so it seems like before we proceed, sorry, are you in opposition to this? Okay, so we're gonna have to hold this, should we just proceed?
Just keep going now.
No, we'll just proceed. No, we'll just proceed then. Sorry. So it seems to be like this item is contested, so we're going to have you come up then, introduce yourself, and just outline your concerns.
Yeah, my name is John Ruttel. My wife and I filed the opposition to this by the deadline. I'm sure you have it.
Yes, we do.
I subsequently have.
So you're at ninety-three Hillcrest?
I am.
Okay.
And I have several neighbors who support the amendment, or pretending to support. We're denying the entire project.
So do you have letters of support or opposition?
Opposition.
Opposition. Okay. Do you want to hand them in, because we only?
Sure. Could I just add that we're not opposing renovations. It's the scale of this project. The houses on both sides are two stories, and this is now an enlarged version of a three-story house. It opens up the door to other massive projects, monster homes, if you wish to talk about them, and it will impact the whole charm of our neighborhood.
And then I just have a, so I have a quick question, if you can just go back to the podium. So how do you feel about the proposed revisions to the plans?
I'm sorry, say it again?
The proposed revisions, so changing the roof line to make?
I haven't, I heard them for the first time just now.
Okay.
We objected to what was on the paper that we got a month ago from the city. If they want to deny this objection, I want them to reapply. Let's go back to square one.
Okay. Okay. So are there any other questions?
I guess maybe if he hasn't seen the revision.
Okay. Because you haven't had a chance to see the revisions, I think it's best to hold this item down, so maybe the agent can speak to you outside to show you exactly what has changed.
I don't care if there's other reasons besides the shape of the roof.
Okay. Okay.
And they're contained in the document my wife and I filed with you.
Yes, we received that document. Okay. So we'll have the agent come up then, and then we'll proceed with this presentation.
Thank you.
And he'll respond to your comments.
Now, or?
Now, yes. So if you can please sit down on the left-hand side.
So as I mentioned, and it was, it was a discussion with the neighbor to the south that resulted in the roof pitch, but as I mentioned earlier, I think this is an improvement. And pardon, I missed your name, Mr. Ruttel?
Ruttel, yeah.
And spoke about the character of the neighborhood, and I think that this, this revision actually does exactly that in terms of maintaining that character. Before, if you were looking at the dwelling, you would have seen beyond the original peak roof, a mass sticking out on the rear portion of the dwelling, whereas now it'll look as if a continued, a continued home going to the, to the rear of the proposed addition. And as I mentioned, it is not too out of, it's fairly in line with the existing rear wall of the dwelling to the north. And I do think that if you're looking at this proposal in terms of massing, this very much reflects the massing of the neighborhood and the existing dwelling. This rear, or this side dormer that sticks out, I just wanted to point out, is just a small portion that exists in the middle of the building today. So that's an elevation, and it looks larger than it does from a perspective view.
Okay. So that's existing?
That's an existing dormer. And I believe there's a building permit related to the home right now for renovations on the whole inside of the house.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any other questions?
Do you have the, do you know how much farther the rear will extend beyond ninety-three?
I do not have that exact measurement, unfortunately. The entire addition is three-point-three-five meters in depth, so looking at the drawing, I would say approximately one meter or less.
So although a height variance isn't being requested here, just from a context perspective, how does the height of the structure compare to others in the area?
It's similar. There's also, there are existing three-story dwellings in the neighborhood. I have a few photos of some of the other ones, and I'll show you a photo of the existing dwelling as well from the front. So this is the?
So perhaps if you, yeah, show it to us on the projector?
Yep, I will do that. This is eighty-seven Hillcrest, which is another, that's the third, it's a bit dark on the screen, but that's the third story, second story, first story. And then, I believe this, that looks really dark. This photo here is eighty-five Hillcrest, which is another three-story.
Okay.
In terms of height, it's just reflecting what is the existing height of the dwelling and reflective of a character that exists in the neighborhood. And as you mentioned, there is no variance required for height.
Okay. Any other questions? And in terms of previous CFA approvals for this FSI, do you have any examples in the neighborhood?
There was forty-three Hillcrest at point six-four. Seven Conrad Avenue, also at point six-four. Eleven Frank Crescent at point six-four. Fifteen Brackendale Hill Road at point six-four. And then there are a few on Tyrell that are, range from point seven-five to one-point-zero-four. And the reason I'm picking these streets is because this is, it's important to look at the density permission in the point zero, or point-three-five zone in terms of density, which is what we're in. There's other ones that are higher, but they're within a point-six, so the numbers I gave you are all within the point-three-five zone.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, discussion, in committee discussion?
I think the revisions are a significant improvement. Any approval I would support would tie it to that. I think ultimately, the footprint is very close to the property directly to the south, to the north, and quite similar to the property to the south if we include, if we were to include its, its deck as part of the footprint. I don't think this is out of character at all.
I'm just looking at our drawing here of the map, and it seems like ninety-seven protrudes much further back as well. There's also a five-story seniors home behind the property as well, in terms of the neighborhood context, so just in the backyard.
Yeah. And I mean, the point-three-five to the actual numerical variance is quite large, but it's in a range that we've approved in the past repeatedly.
I think the revised design, although it didn't impact the FSI being requested substantially, I think from a massing perspective and from an appearance perspective, makes a world of difference. And I agree with my colleague that it's not out of character with what currently exists in the, in the neighborhood.
I agree with the comments that have been made so far. I mean, they are large homes. There are additions that are varying in size throughout that, that area, so I agree with Mr. Carlson that this is not out of context with what's existing.
Okay. Okay, then I'll need a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, to move a motion to approve the amended application, subject to the plan submitted to the committee today, as I believe.
Subject to be tied to those plans?
Yes. Yes. And as I believe, the application is not out of character with the area meets the four tests.
Okay. So a motion to approve the amended application, including the tied-to-plans condition, has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
I will.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the amended application's been approved. Thank you very much for coming up.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen sixty-four Wembley Road. Mr. Ruttel, if you can please fill out decision request card, which is actually in front of you, just in case there are any appeal proceedings, or we can, yeah, it's just right there, decision request card. If you can please hand it in to the secretary treasurer, who will sit down on my left-hand side. Okay. So item number nineteen, item number nineteen sixty-four Wembley Road. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have emailed correspondence from transportation services, and then we have correspondence in support from sixty-two Wembley Road. Okay. Panel members, sorry, introduce yourself.
My name's Kyle England. I'm with William Deuce and Architects, the agent for the owners.
Okay. So we'll proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentations. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
No? Okay. So front yard parking space, okay.
I think this is very minor, Madam Chair, and transportation is okay with what's being proposed. So if there are no comments, then I would be prepared to move approval of the application, as I feel it's minor and meets the four tests.
Okay. So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. We have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application's been approved.
Sentiment.
Oh, sorry. So Mr. Carlson dissents on this application. Okay. Thank you very much. The application's been approved.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, do we have the agent here for fifty-six Tiago Avenue? Okay. If you can please come up. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We also have a CFA decision affecting subject property, and then we have correspondence in opposition from thirty-four Yardley Avenue. Okay. If you can please introduce yourself.
Yes, good morning. My name is John. I'm the applicant for this application.
Okay. Ramirez, then?
Yes. So on July two thousand and fifteen, we were here, we got an approval for a floor space area of point-six-six. Today, we're requesting an increase of zero-point-zero, zero-nine floor space. I'll just show you what we're asking for on this site plan.
Okay. So if you can go very quickly, because we just?
We don't really need a present.
So you see like the dark shaded area there is what we're asking for. The, the construction started in two thousand and fifteen, but there was a dispute with the previous homeowners. So the bank took over, sold it to the client I'm working with today, who purchased it this year, and they want to start construction as soon as possible, so they can finish the house.
Okay.
That's been standing for three years.
Okay. Thank you. Panel members, any questions? Okay. There are no questions, so we'll move into discussion, in committee for discussion or a motion.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think this is very minor, going from point-six to point-six-six times, so I would move approval of the application, as it meets the four tests.
Okay. So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-one Brookside Drive, sorry, five Brookside Drive. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a CFA decision affecting the subject property, and then we have seven form letters in support from various addresses on Brookside, including us, number seven, so directly adjacent neighbor, and then also three Brookside. Okay? If you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Matthew Chong, agent for the owner.
Okay. So we'll just proceed with questions unless there is a request for a presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions? So you're removing the existing one-story, is that correct?
No, there, oh, yes, sorry. There's an existing old one-story that has been there since about nineteen-fifties and being replaced by a new addition. The current addition added a stair to get down to the basement, removing that to provide a different stair to get down, plus the extension of the house by eleven feet.
And the parking space, that's an existing condition, obviously?
It's an existing condition. They've been parking there. When they purchased the house twelve years ago, they've been parking there. It was sold as a parking space to them. The previous owner was parking there, and they're currently parking there now.
Okay.
And as you can see, there's no opposition from the neighbor to the south, who's, would be impacted by them parking there, but there's no opposition there.
Okay. Panel members, any questions?
No.
Okay. No questions, discussion or a motion?
I would just note that both adjacent neighbors are in support, which includes the other half of the semi. And as was mentioned, the parking is an existing condition. In terms of the FSI, I don't feel that this is an unreasonable increase, considering there are a lot of varying additions in the neighborhood.
I would agree.
Okay. So a motion then?
Through you, Madam Chair. A motion, I would like to move a motion to approve the application, as I believe it is indeed minor and fits within the character of the existing neighborhood.
Okay. So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Sure.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two two-oh-six Jeffrey Street. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have seven form letters in support from various addresses, including two-oh-four and two-oh-eight, so directly adjacent neighbors on Jeffrey Street. Okay? If you can please introduce yourself.
My name's Craig Ritz with CAR Design Studio, and the agent for the owners.
Okay. So we'll just proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation. Panel members? If you can give us examples of other rare detached garages that also have such a large floor area?
Yeah, I have a photograph here, actually. So the two adjacent properties to the east, so it'd be two-oh-four and two-oh-two. Can see that these are significant in size, certainly two lots to the east is a very large accessory building, spans almost the full width of the property. Obviously, what we're proposing, we've created a bit of a buffer. The R-zone does allow for a zero-lot line condition, or no building setback for rear yard garages. Again, we have proposed a setback to create a bit of a buffer. So as well, I do have another photo, but the, the property directly adjacent to the west is also a two-car garage.
And in terms of the soft landscaping, so there's already, never mind, sorry. So the driveway is already existing, is that correct?
The bulk of the driveway is, you can see the line, the dotted line through the driveway there is, you can see, is the line of the existing asphalt, so really what's being added Again, it becomes a little bit tricky with a thirty-foot lot, obviously where you've got? Obviously, where we've got these rear yard garage conditions with the resulting driveways and walkways, it tends to get a little bit tricky with the 50% requirement. But again, we have created soft buffers at both sides of the garage, where the bylaw would allow us to go from lot line to lot line. And since speaking with the owner, permeable paving is something that could certainly be entertained. Again, the bulk of what's there, as far as the driveway is existing asphalt now. And we feel that certainly there's still an opportunity for some significant planting, planting beds, sod, what have you.
Okay, panel members, any questions? Okay, no questions, we'll be in committee for a discussion.
I think the landscaping condition is largely driven by the ability to navigate into the garage. Permeable pavers would be helpful to the drainage situation, of course, but in terms of surface area, it would be difficult to make it much less than what it is to allow you to get in and out of that garage. Well, I would add that I feel the garage itself is not out of context with some of the existing garages. I would be more comfortable with any additional parts instead of asphalt with permeable pavers.
I would agree that it fits in the context. I am concerned about soft landscaping. So my motion would be to approve the application on the condition that the driveway...
Or additions, driveway additions?
Yeah, that it, yeah, that additions to the driveway. New rear yard paving should be permeable.
I would be prepared to second that motion.
So...
New?
It's just, most of it is already existing.
Yeah, it's on the sides, so I think it could work.
And also the new pathways.
Yeah, he had mentioned he was willing to entertain.
That would be, it ties in directly into a shared drive, so.
It would certainly be a little excessive if we're looking at doing the entire existing driveway in permeable paving. I mean, given the existing condition, I'm not sure.
So are you okay with it being partial, whatever you're adding to the driveway, to be permeable pavers?
If that's what the committee is requesting, then obviously it's, we're at your mercy.
New additions to the driveway be constructed with permeable? Walkways, yeah.
New paving, I'm thinking so. I would suggest phrasing it as new paving in the rear yard. So anything that is replaced has to be.
Okay.
Is it possible, if we're referring to the walkway surfaces, that all new walkway surfaces would be in permeable paving, where the driveway surface could be maintained as a continuation of the existing asphalt?
Yeah. Okay. So all new walkways and rear?
So that's Mr. Carlson's motion.
Okay, so Mr. Carlson's motion to approve the variance application includes a condition that all new walkways and rear be constructed with permeable pavers? Sorry? All?
All walkways.
All walkways, okay. All walkways. And then, do we have a seconder for that motion?
Seconder.
Seconded by Ms. Omen. All in favor? So the application is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move forward with the health items. Do we need a break? Bathroom break?
Three minutes? Five minutes?
Yeah, so we'll take a five-minute, we'll take a seven-minute washroom break? Yeah, seven-minute washroom break, and then we'll begin at 10:25. Okay? So we'll begin with item number 39 St. Nicholas Street. That's going to be the first item that will be brought up back after the break. How many items for, right?
Even my dentist sent me a note that...
Wow, so sweet. Guess dentists are people too.
My God, I can't believe this. The real estate agent, the real...
Okay, so we proceed with item number 3, 9 St. Nicholas Street. So if we can have the agent please come up, and the party's opposing the application. Okay, so I'll just mention what the committee has in front of us. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have correspondence in, oh, sorry, never mind. We have, okay, so we have the cover letter from the agent. We have a C of A decision affecting subject property. We have a heritage impact assessment by EIA Architects. We have a staff report from Heritage Preservation. Then we have correspondence in opposition from David Bronski on behalf of 5 to 7 St. Nicholas Street. Also Mark Flowers on behalf of 6 to 8 Wesley Street. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Sure. So I'm David Riley with SGL Planning. Yeah, very quick presentation on what the variance request is. So 9 St. Nicholas Street is a commercial building. Heritage designated building under both Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act, which is individual buildings, as well as Part V, which is Heritage District designation. So there's very strict rules and guidelines of what can happen to this building. So this building is currently in the process of being completely renovated for commercial purposes. New windows, the floors are like blank slates right now. It's going to be a series of commercial uses. There's windows at the front and on the north side of the building, and one row of windows along the rear of the building. And along the south elevation, which is what pertains to the elevation, there's existing, four existing windows on the fifth floor. The third floor and below, there's an attached building to the south. And the representative for those property owners is here today, who can speak on their behalf. And so the proposal is to add windows at the fourth and sixth floor in the same configuration and placement as exists on the fifth floor today. So the variance is required because of the new bylaw has the requirement for main walls with windows to be set back five and a half meters. This is an existing building that is built on the property line with existing windows, so it's a proposed continuation of that existing condition. Heritage Planning, or Heritage Preservation Services has reviewed through, you know, many components of what the work that's actually happening in this building and the required heritage permits to do that. But also, they've reviewed the proposal for these windows and have indicated that they have no concern. On the south wall, really, the elements that are, it's not the windows themselves that are the elements that are protected. It's, there's existing painted brick, which is the old sign for the industry that used to be in the building, which is located above the six-story windows, which won't be affected by this. So that was one of the concerns looked at.
So I just wanted, in terms of the furrow, so you're okay to proceed today?
We're okay to proceed today. We've had a discussion, and in terms of the application here, there's no opposition present today.
Okay, so there's no opposition anymore, okay. So maybe if we can have, actually, both agents, as they're here, to come up and to respond to what the agent has just mentioned, that there's no longer opposition? If you could please introduce yourself.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Ian Andres. Last name's A-N-D-R-E-S, and I'm a lawyer with Goodman's. And as my friend said, I'm here on behalf of the owner of the immediately adjacent property to the south, which is a lot assembly, including 5 and 7 St. Nicholas.
Okay, 5 to 7 St. Nicholas, okay.
Yeah, the other municipal addresses are 10 to 16 Wellesley Street, and it's actually a through lot, including 586 Young Street as well. So it is correct that we are no longer in opposition to this application. We were able to work out an agreement with the applicant in the hallway. And on that basis, we're prepared to withdraw our objection to the application today. My partner, David Bronski, had submitted a letter, as you said, raising some concerns. And the concerns originally stemmed from the fact that our client can build a building as of right, right to the lot line, as long as it doesn't have windows on that side, right up against the proposed windows here. But we've been able to work out a solution to that issue. So I stand today now in support of the application. We've signed minutes of settlement with the applicant, and so...
Okay, great, thank you. And how about the other party that was in concern or in interest?
I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Of the applicant, okay, sorry, okay. Okay, so panel members, do you have any questions? We have no questions, so in committee discussion?
From the planning perspective, I have really no concerns with this. The privacy issues that were raised... The privacy issues that were raised are, I don't want to dismiss them, but they, I don't think that they are particularly concerning, given the context of the neighborhood. I think this is appropriate.
I would agree with Mr. Carlson. I think the concerns stem more around if the adjacent owner is going to build in the future and they've resolved that. I think, based on what's before us, I don't have any problems with the application.
Yep, I agree as well. Okay, so I'll need a motion then?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the application, including the heritage condition, and I feel that it meets the four tests and fits within the context of that area and doesn't have any impact at this time.
Okay, so motion to approve, including the heritage condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number nine, 126 Delaware Avenue. So if we can have the agent applicant please come up, as well as the parties in interest's application. So the committee has in front of us Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans, Elevations, and we have email, sorry, we have correspondence in opposition from 47 Hepburn Street. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and give us a very quick presentation of your proposal.
My name is Louis Cristallo. I'm the applicant and agent here today. We are building a new garage here, and I'm trying to keep it in line with garages that already exist in the neighborhood. I have spoken with my neighbor here. He has some concerns with regards to a right-of-way that exists on the property directly north, which is my home, and I'm willing to make a concession there of some space, just keeping in line with the rest of the garages in the laneway. I've brought some pictures showing these garages, and that goes with variance one. With regards to variance two and the height of the garage, I am asking for 4.2 meters. There are existing garages already that are four meters high, so I don't thi, I really think that's a minor variance. And lastly, with the gross area of the garage, I am also willing to make concessions, but the two garages directly south of me are 59.62 square meters. One, that's 124 and 122 Delaware. That being said, I'm hoping that we can get some approval today.
Okay, so we'll have the contesting party please come up and introduce themselves and state their concern.
Hi, I'm Paul Mateus. I'm the owner of 47 Hepburn Street. I am concerned as the laneway comes up, it widens out, and that affects my parking for my space at 47 Hepburn Street. I have a right-of-way, I guess for 128 Delaware, he's proposing to build a garage at 126 Delaware. He's also touched upon the fact of the garage at 122 and 124. However, the laneway widens out, those garages don't affect me because I can pass there, but when I come up, I have to turn my car to get into my garage, and he's already built his garage at 128 Delaware. There's about 20 inches once I pull my car out that I can't make a full sharp turn to swing the rear end of my car out to avoid the existing garage. And then, as well, my car, the front end will strike hit the garage because there's only like about 20 inches, 21 inches. So I've asked him to sort of compromise on the northwest corner, and I think you have my correspondence about that. So if he could adhere, at the very least adhere to item number one, or the variance of number one where it's placed one meter back, that would be a big help for me. Further, you know, he's asking for like more than 50% increase in the surface area, so if he could maybe trade that off with some sort of compromise, I've suggested maybe he could make a, rather than the northeast corner come to a point, maybe he could cut off like one meter from each direction and make it on a 45. That would help me, greatly assist me in getting access to my parking. It's already difficult now, and what I'm seeing from the diagrams is he's going to come 3.5 feet further out from the existing wood garage, two feet further north from the existing wood garage, so that's going to be a problem. So maybe in reduction for, or allowing him to go more than 50% beyond the surface area, maybe he could reduce that northeast corner somehow. Maybe he could build it a foot back, so like one foot further south from the north point. Maybe he could build his garage at the same size but further in, you know? So I think that's not within reason. I think here, there's a lot of room for some creativity here, and he could be like a good neighbor, have some consideration. I'm not sure what would happen in previous like histories with other areas. I have no experience from that. Maybe you could touch on that or use some of that kind of creativity or knowledge to find a better compromise for us.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, so have you come to a mutual agreement then in terms of moving the garage back?
Well, he says he's asking for like a .63 in item one. He said rather than go like .63 beyond, he'd go one foot back, so he's giving me like one more foot, whereas I think, you know, if he could move his garage back one foot, he's still going to have his yard. He might be giving up one 5 hundredths of it or something. I don't think that's going to have a profound negative effect on him. And I think somehow, you know, maybe for the water, the drainage, maybe if he could give me some room on the north side too, or maybe build it on an angle, that last two, three feet that of the northeast corner point, I don't know. I'm not a builder, but he's saying it's not feasible. I've asked him for compromise that way. That would go a huge way to allow me to have access to my car, my parking spot, because what is this now, my garage? The width of the door is maybe 7.3 feet, and then my car is like 16, 17 feet long, and then there'll be 21 feet from, once my car is out, and I more or less have to drive straight in and straight out. Then I have to make a sharp turn. It's already impacted by the garage there at 128 Delaware. I can't fully turn my wheels, so it has to be, you know, like a.
So for item one, you're looking at around 0.63 meters from the rear lot line? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what he's suggesting, but if it's saying one meter, and if he could hang on and we could hold that, you know, that would be a huge help for me. And maybe he'd compromise the square footage on another part of the garage somehow, just to, so he can have the same square footage, but he's asking like more than 50%. And what about the drainage too? So maybe, and it's not fully clear to me. He says he has one foot, there'll be like his lot on 128 where his existing garage exists, there's one foot there. So I'm not fully clear or certain of that based on the diagram, but I know that it's going to be very hard for me. I can't just drive my car out and then, you know, come out and do like a full, come out, go 90 degrees and come out, you know? It's just impossible.
Okay.
And I'm concerned, sorry, once it's built that it's going to be, you know, once it's built, there's no turning back, right? I don't think he's going to have any willingness to tear it down, so I'm hoping that somehow there can be more of a compromise than what he's willing to give me.
Okay, so we'll have the owner come up and respond to the concern? So my issue is that if there's any adjustments, that we'll probably have to defer this application because that will might impact soft landscaping.
If I may, if I may put up a photograph?
Sure.
Okay, this is, this is the right-of-way existing. There is 21 feet there. I don't see what 126 Delaware should have to do with that property.
So can you give us the addresses?
Well, yeah, one, so the right-of-way, that's 128 Delaware. The markings are for 128, and directly south is 126 Delaware, the existing garage. Okay, so he, he has that right-of-way to maneuver. The fact that his car is 16 feet long, you know, a car could be 10 feet long for how we know. I think that's enough room for him to get out of there, and I don't see what 126 Delaware would have to do anything with that right-of-way.
So with the 128, sorry, 126 is the one with the red door?
Yes.
Already protruding out, so you're planning to build on the same?
No, I want to, I would like to, I would make a compromise. I asked for .37. If you look at the plan, the garage is jogged, because I wanted to keep with, with 599 and 597 Dover Court, they're only back, as you can see here.
So what are you, what you're proposing, is it going to be?
I'm proposing to come back from the laneway, the rear lot line, that much, which it's maybe difficult for you to read there, but it's less than two feet. I believe it's, it's point, that's point four six. I would go as far as point seven. I will reduce it to, I'll push it back point seven from the lot line.
What's the, what's, why, why do you need a variance at all? Because of the size of the structure that you're looking to put in?
Well, so that I get more backyard space.
Okay, that's the.
Yeah, okay, I want to push the garage back further and keep the greenery in the backyard. And so already with doing that, I've, I've reduced the size of the, of the garage, hopefully close enough that matches the two neighbors directly south of me.
So are you reducing the size of the garage? So right there you have 60?
Yes, I will take that space. I'm not going to take it from the backyard. I'm going to push that garage in.
Okay, so what, are you amending then? Are you revising your variance?
I will revise it instead of 3.7. That's, I'm willing to make that compromise.
Okay, so you're gonna, but you're also changing this floor area of the garage?
Well, it will automatically change because I'm taking away that space.
Do you know how mu, what's going to change to?
Um.
I think there's too many changes on the fly here.
I would change, I would change it to, I would shrink this garage to the maximum that the committee would allow me today. If those garages are already 60 square meters.
Yeah, like we, we can't just do numbers on the fly, like I said, I mentioned in my opening remarks.
And how, how do I, I have measurements showing the other garage?
It's not the other garage, it's your garage we're concerned about in terms of getting the variances on paper correct.
So you would like me to redo the plans and bring them in again?
Preferably yes, I think. I mean, we can have a discussion, panel members.
Are you clear on exact, I guess what you're saying is, do you know, you know exactly what you'd like to amend to ask us to consider today?
Yes.
Okay, so what would that be?
I would like to ask that I can be, I can build a garage point seven meters from the lot line at, in both instances, because the garage is jogged. The laneway, if I can show a picture of the laneway here, where Paul is saying that the laneway widens out, just to put a picture up.
Okay, and with that change, do you know what the new floor area of the garage will be?
It would be approximately 60 square meters.
But then, if you're going to 0.7, why not just go to 1.0? I mean, that's like a, it's a foot.
It's a foot, why, I mean, it's, you know, spa, I would prefer that space in the backyard, the one foot.
I understand you, but you're asking for setback for height and then floor area. Three very.
Minor variances. That's what they were, that's what I was told they were. I'm here today for minor variances.
It's just a combination of three minor variances.
Oh, it's a major variance I'm asking for?
I know, so panel members, how?
So with respect to the floor area of the garage, if we look at what you're proposing as a revised number, you'd mentioned earlier there were some other garages in the neighborhood?
Yes, and I have pictures.
Are there other garages that you can demonstrate are the size that you're requesting?
Yes.
Could you give us those addresses or if you have?
Yes, I ha, yes, I have them.
Thank you.
If you just bear with me one second.
Sure.
These are two garages directly south, that's one of them, and then you'll see where the east trough comes down, the other one continues. Those are both exactly the same size. They are 59.62 meters. And I, and I can stay within that measurement.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Sorry, so now there is no opportunity for you to rebut. Okay, if no more questions, we're in committee. Sorry, I'm just confused, sorry. Before we're in committee, I just want to verify that you're revising your application?
Yes, I will revise to these new measurements spoken today.
So variance number one will now be 0.7 meters instead of 0.37 meters?
Yes.
And variance number three will now be a floor area of 60 meters squared instead of the 63.80 meters squared?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're now in committee, discussion, panel members?
I mean, I hear the neighbors' concerns, but generally speaking, the laneways downtown are quite tight, you know, to navigate in. In terms of the actual application, based on what I saw, there are other garages that are similar in size as to what's being proposed. Now that it's been amended, it's actually very close to some of the existing garages. So I, I don't feel that this is an unreasonable proposal.
Yeah, the revision 3.7 to .7 is very small, but it has addressed the concern I had.
Yeah, I mean, the applicant has.
We are dealing with an issue that is centimeters.
Yeah, and, and you know, the applicant is trying to be amenable to his neighbor's concerns by making the amendments.
I think with the characteristics, because it brings on, because it's sort of a hammerhead there that you're going into, that makes the parking considerations that have been mentioned by the neighbor relevant to discussion because there's less ability to, you, there's only, you can't go forward anymore. I think the .37 I have some concerns with. .7 is certainly better than what's being, was originally proposed. The size of the garage, I think, is still quite large. There are two neighboring ones that have been brought to our attention that are of similar sizes, the amended application being requested, so I can't say it's not out of character, but.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, it's definitely a large garage, but I don't think it's out of character.
I'm still a little conflicted on this application. As I mentioned, even though there are only three variances being sought, I feel like they pushed the limit in terms of setbacks, height, and the floor area. I do agree that there is precedence in the context where there's the two neighboring garages are 59 meters squared, but I also have issues with just throwing numbers, amending the application kind of on the fly without having the calculations in front of us.
I'd really like to see the rear lot line retained, given the, the physical characteristics of that end of the laneway, that's my.
I agree, considering that would be a.
I have, I have that.
We're in, we're in committee. Considering that it would be from, it would be a foot difference.
Well, I just think the characteristics of that it's a hammerhead right there, and there's.
Okay, so panel members, on your motion?
I.
Go ahead.
I just would comment, we could defer and need. I just would comment, we could defer and need to see new plans.
Well, I, I mean, we've been given amendments and numbers. I'm not sure that, that that's the right way to go. Okay, well, if, through you, Madam Chair, I'll try this motion. I feel that with the amendments that have been made by the applicant, I am of the opinion that it's sometimes difficult to work within these sites downtown where you're trying to keep green space and, you know, you're also trying to have a place to park your cars. I feel that this is not out of character. And I, I feel it meets the four tests, so I move approval, including the amendments to variance number one to .7 meters and variance number three to 60 square meters.
Okay, so a motion to approve the amended application has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
All second.
Okay, second, Ms. Hayes, all in favor? And I will dissent. Okay, so the amended application has been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming out. Sorry, there is, yeah, so you have to fill out the decision request card and then you're going to remail the decision and the appeal proceedings instructions. So that's something you'll have to speak to staff members about. Okay, so we move for item number 20, not today, but item number 23, 171 Glebemount Avenue. Have the agent or applicant please come up. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from Transportation Services. We have correspondents in support from 177 and 158B Glebemount Avenue. And then we have one correspondence opposition from 169 Glebemount Avenue. Okay, if we can have the parties opposing this application also come up and be seated on my left-hand side, yep. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and give us a short presentation of your proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Joe Dome, agent for the owners. In regards to the parking variances, I'd like to go over a few issues with the existing parking situation to add some needed context in light of the transportation report recommendations. I then like to address the existing rear deck discrepancy. The owners, John and Pema, have a young child and there are a number of safety issues with the existing sloped right-of-way slash driveway, along with flooding issues. These issues are present because of existing issues with the garage, preventing them from being able to use it for parking, thereby forcing them to park on the unsafe sloped right-of-way. Currently, they can't use the garage due to safety and flooding concerns. There's a low height at the entrance and their SUV doesn't fit. I can actually show you a photo here. Okay, and those, I don't know if you can tell in the photo, those are sandbags actually right in front of the garage, between the garage and the drain due to the flooding concerns that I'm also going to talk about. With no other option essentially, parking on the slope is dangerous. Getting out of the car with a young child is hazardous, especially in the winter. And they actually have been forced to use sandbags under the front wheels of the car. And a few points that have been mentioned in the letters of support that have been submitted from directly across the street, 158A and 158D Glebemount. 171 is the only house on the block with a driveway with a steep incline. And neighbors across the street have witnessed the car slipping in winter and the kids slipping in the driveway. And to make matters worse, children play on the street and aren't visible when backing out of the driveway due to the steep incline. And the steep 17.5 degree slope means that they need to use the parking brake every time they park and place those sandbags under the wheels as an additional precaution. And then there's intermittent flooding issues. And it regularly floods. Heavy east-to-west rains cause flooding in the basement, so they have had to install those sandbags. And I have another closer photo of those. And basically, if the sewer on the road backs up, then they flood. Regarding the transportation report and recommendations issued on September 20th, the reality is it will be putting the owners in almost impossible position. If they do follow the recommendations, there will be no parking available to them as parking on the street is increasingly limited. And the neighbor has attested to that as well with the hospital addition and visitor parking, basically increasing the parking on the street. And essentially, if they do park on the street, they're only allowed to park there for three hours and then they get ticketed. And so this is not a very feasible option. And so what we would like to ask for is to, a front yard parking appeal if possible. And as far as parking and transportation is concerned, the preceding issues are demonstrated as a last resort scenario according to Toronto Municipal Code, Chapter 918. And I'd also like to address the rear deck discrepancy brought up by the neighbor at 169. And here's some background. The house was fully renovated by the HGTV show Property Brothers in 2015. The owners were contractually obligated to not be involved in the permits, the final decision, or any actions with the build. And I do have a portion of the contract present which states these exact points if the committee wishes to see it.
Uh, no, I think, move on.
Okay.
Okay, so it's almost five minutes, so if you can wrap up and...
Yeah.
Or else we'll ask you questions or...
Okay, yeah, okay, I'll try to just get through it quick. The permit back in 2015 was issued with a smaller deck design, but the Property Brothers built the existing deck larger, which is reflected in the exact...
All right, so you're just going to have to wrap up?
Okay, yeah, so basically, the existing deck is, is the proposed deck in the plans. And so there's, there was a discrepancy there and, and that's, that's the current.
Is that drawing A101? So whatever it says, existing deck?
Yes.
That's already existed, that's...
So that is existed and so they, they built that?
No variance.
We have no variance for decks, so yeah, it will not impact our decision.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll have the neighbor who's in interest or concern please come up and introduce herself and her address.
Hi, good morning, my name is Georgina Donahue. I live on the corner of 169, directly Nevers to 171. I just want to let you know I've lived in the neighborhood for 26 years. They've just moved in in the last three years, the Nevers, and the sandbags have only just been put up in the last six months. There was always flooding in that house, that was our concerns. We used to help the previous neighbors, they were an elderly couple. My concern is that when the Property Brothers did the house, they moved windows and everything, I know that's not a part of today, but a lot of that house is not up to code. And what we're upset about is that we are less than five we, five feet in our backyard for that big humongous deck that is built. We are not a two-story brick house, we are a one-story with wood on the second floor. There's multiple issues with the survey, the survey's not correct. So I'm just a bit confused of, you know, the deck wouldn't have been mentioned if there wasn't obviously a proposal to do some additions to the house. I understand that they do have children and it is a slope, steep driveway, but it's been like that for years and the neighbors never had any problem and they parked a car there, they had young children, with their grandchildren. So I'm just contesting more the, the back deck that's already existing. I've tried to reach out to the neighbor, doesn't want to communicate. We had some damage done to our house this year by their roofers. They've told us that everything has to do with the Property Brothers, but we know that the construction of the deck was built after the Property Brothers had left. So that's my concern. Also, our house was damaged this year. We tried to reach out to the neighbor, he doesn't want to acknowledge, so we had to reach out to the roofers that damaged our house. We got our house fixed through them. There just doesn't seem to be any permits and I'm very worried that if anything was to happen to that house, because I don't think it's up to code, that our house will be damaged in the process. And that's my concerns.
Unfortunately, I hear your concerns, but we don't have variances in regards to the deck.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the building issues, you will have to contact the building department.
I understand.
Make sure that, that's...
Yeah.
And panel members, do you have any questions? Do you have any issues in terms of parking in the...
I just find the parking seems to be fine in the winter. As I say, it's only in the last six months that they've put the sandbags there and the sandbags behind the tires. I don't know why their car seems to be slipping more than, you know, 18 years of the previous owners being there, they never had a problem.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to have the agent come up and respond?
Yes, and as far as the disagreements between the neighbor and the owners, I, I can't attest to that, but I mean, the real, the concern here, I think that supersedes the disagreements, which can be, of course, taken up with city and inspections. But the safety issue, I think, is the main concern for the owners and, you know, that's something that is very important to them.
Panel members, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Is there permit, overnight permit parking in this area or not?
I don't think so, no, it's just a three-hour limit. I spoke with Transportation and that's what they've mentioned.
Sorry, so I, I can't seem to recall, like I remember the house, but I can't seem to recall the neighborhood context. Can you tell us how many other driveways there are?
Oh, how many other, all the driveways are level?
All other driveways?
All the other driveways, yeah. So I mean, as far as fitting into the existing streetscape, it's very consistent.
Okay, panel members, any other questions?
No. So you are, I mean, just again, you are clear with the statements made in the transportation report?
Yes.
And they say that it's non-appealable?
Yes, and essentially, I did speak to Transportation about that. And so they did mention the process of a front yard parking appeal, that the committee could, could ask for that as a condition.
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, we can attach to condition, not attach to condition, transportation. I have a question, sorry, I know, so the deck doesn't have a variance, but is there any possibility for putting up a privacy fence?
Sure.
So a privacy fence would not help?
Not at all.
Okay, sorry, I forgot.
Given that there's no variance.
Yeah, there's nothing related to it, so I'm not sure how you...
That reasonably related to the parking spot.
Okay, okay, so no other questions? Okay, no other question, discussion? Yeah, let's just remove the, yeah, so we're going to edit the purpose of the application and remove the mention of the, the end portion of the purpose and by constructing a new rear ground deck, since that's not part of the application process.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, transportation has certainly been clear that there won't be any front yard parking permitted. The application for it would be denied. There is no permit parking on the street, which means basically what's being proposed is, would be for a family or residents who don't have a car. But the agent already indicated that they have an SUV and I, I understand there's flooding issues and different issues, but unfortunately, those are not part of the committee's decision-making criteria. So we have to look at the planning merits.
I, I was of two minds of this, but when I think through the actual tests, what I find myself believing is that it would not be desirable to create a zero parking condition in an area where we have seen that there will not be other parking available.
Well, I agree, and it's, you know, it's putting habitable space there instead of the parking spot, and I understand they may need the extra space, but again, legally, they have nowhere to park their car other than three hours and that doesn't even apply between 5:00 and, or 2:00 and 5:00 a.m.
I would suggest that an application to correct the issues with the parking would be more appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, if they wish to still make the garage into habitable space and keep the driveway, that's a different discussion, but they want to remove the driveway.
That would be a front, that would be a front yard parking pad.
I mean, sorry, I also know that, I thought they're going to keep the driveway.
They would not be permitted to as front yard.
They're not permitted.
They're filling that in, fill the driveway level up to the front yard grade.
Because it's not entirely on private property, it's municipal and the city won't support it.
Yes, it's not just sort of taking the garage door out and making it, you know, that way. Which we've seen in certain circumstances. I would agree, I, you know, given the circumstances with respect to transportation's comments and the fact that there are no alternative, you know, permit parking that can be applied for and if can be applied for, is it available? I, I don't think it can create a situation where there is zero parking attached to a house in these circumstances. So, is there further comment?
I...
You're moving a motion?
Okay, I'll move a motion through Madam Chair. I'll move a motion to refuse the application, as I don't believe it is appropriate beneath the test under the act.
Okay.
Well, second that.
So a motion to refuse has been moved by Ms. Hayes, second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? And I'll dissent on this one. Okay, so the application has been refused. Thank you very much, thank you. Item number, please make sure to fill out the decision request cards. Item number 24, 94 Galley Avenue. So the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and we have staff report from community planning, as well as correspondents in support from 93 Galley Avenue and 21 letters, form letters in support from various addresses on Galley, including the directly adjacent neighbor at 96, number of addresses on Garden, and then also Galley Avenue. Okay, do we have the interested parties still here in the room?
Yes, he's here.
Yes, if they can please come up and be seated on my left-hand side? If you can please introduce yourself?
Morning, my name is Sean Galbraith, I'm a planner here with the applicant. What's before you is a modest third-story top-of, small second-story bump-out and a reduced first floor, being pulled back from what it currently exists. Well, meeting the four tests is below the average for the, for the neighborhood, which density variances are by far the most common variance granted in the area. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I just have a quick question, what is the existing FSI, because I couldn't find it?
That I don't...
Okay, so I'll sit you down, I'll have the neighbor raise his concerns and maybe if you come back, if you can give us the number.
Yep.
Okay, so, sir, if you can please come up, introduce yourself and your address?
Yes, my name's Tom Hartlock and I live at 94 Galley Avenue and it's the house that's attached, it's a semi-detached house. And I'm here because I just have a lot of concerns.
Okay, do you want to outline some of the concerns? Because I don't believe we have a letter...
Is your address 90...
Is your address ninety-four and a half, or is it
No, ninety-two.
Ninety-two, okay.
We don't, I don't think we have a letter on file, so
No, I didn't send it on.
Okay, so if you can
Did you just put something on the projector?
Yeah, but I don't know if you can read it.
I think it's
Slide down.
Okay, one more, and that's something you can hand in to the Secretary Treasurer?
Yes, I just listed the stuff that was concerning me, and I thought, I was worried about when they cut the brick on their house to extend it out, that my brick might fall down. I know that, hopefully, they got the right structural engineer. I'm worried about how much natural light I'll lose on the, on the third floor, because their wall's going right up by my window. I was worried about the, my cars that are parked in the back, I don't have a garage, but I have cars parked in the back, just, that's a construction issue, I guess it doesn't affect you guys. I'm concerned that this construction project will probably last a year, they won't be living there, but I still will be. I was concerned about insurance, I don't know if my house insurance will pay if something happens to my house while this construction's going on, I'm not sure if Marco's insurance will pay if something happens. I noticed that the roof soffit line is already over my property, and I was hoping that if they do this construction, that they don't overlap my property, or intrude onto my property. And I was concerned about the construction crew using my house as a deck to building their house. That's really, that's all I have to say, I'm not sure what you guys can pick from that group.
Okay, so the majority of issues are construction-related, so that's not under our jurisdiction, so you'll have to contact the building department for that. I'm sure maybe the agent can answer some of these questions in regards to the roof line, as well as the as well as the venting, venting and, yeah, the exterior vents where they're going to be located. Panel members, do you have any questions of the neighbor? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, if you can hand in your letter to, oh, you have it? Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
To answer your first question, the existing density is point-six-nine, which would be probably about the same as Tom's property. Given the relationship between the two houses, the third-floor extension, it will cast a shadow on the second-floor roof of Tom's property, just the nature of a north-facing rear yard. The second and first-floor rear additions are quite minor, and I don't believe that they will cast any significant shadows on his property, and the first-floor addition is actually less than what currently exists on the property. As for venting, that level of architectural detail, I don't have at this point. We certainly would not be looking to vent, you know, towards his property or in a way that would negatively impact him. It's certainly a conversation that the neighbors are happy to have, they have a very good relationship, and these conversations between neighbors are, I think it would be fine. Yeah, they're happy to work together.
You're aware of the planning condition?
Yep, the planning is, the condition is basically build what we've shown on the plans, and we're perfectly fine with that as a condition.
Any other questions? Okay, no questions, okay, discussion or motion?
Construction issues aside, this seems entirely in keeping with the area, so I would support this application as an appropriate intensification.
Uh, yeah, is that a motion?
All right, if there's no further comments, I approve of the application, as I believe it to be minor in nature and desirable for development of the site.
Including the
Including the planning condition relating to the third-floor deck.
With that, I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve the variance condition, including the planning conditions, has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor, so the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, just make sure you fill out the decision request cards. Thank you very much. The morning hearing has been adjourned eleven-seventeen? Okay, so eleven-fourteen.
I don't wanna, while you're writing, no.
Oh, I thought you wanted to rush on this a little bit.
No, I just have to sign stuff.